...of his passing. And so, the stories don't normally happen that way when your own loved one becomes your own superhero. But he's our superhero. And so, I just advocate for donation and if I can call a plan of action for anybody, if you're not already a registered organ eye and tissue donor, I would encourage you to think about it, speak to your loved ones. And you don't have to go to the DMV anymore. It's really easy. You can do it from the privacy of your home by going to donate, donate live california.org.
We do have a second presentation on, now, I see you have SBA on your shirt, but it says on our agenda, the FDA wildfire recovery presentation. So, maybe you could help?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, and thank you council members for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Natalie Longwell, and I'm a public information officer for the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. Our office is in Los Angeles with FEMA in the aftermath of the January wildfires, helping survivors of this disaster recover. Our mission is to help communities prepare for, respond to, recover from, and mitigate against disasters of all types. We assist in the economic recovery of communities after disaster by providing long-term, low-interest loans to businesses, nonprofits, homeowners, and renters. Tonight, I'll be speaking about the different types of assistance you may be eligible for if your home or business is within Los Angeles County or the surrounding counties of Kern, Orange, Ventura, or San Bernardino. Next slide, please. Our federal program provides low-interest federal disaster loans to assist both businesses and residents that are either uninsured or underinsured as a result of the wildfires. After floods, earthquakes, hurricanes, wildfires, and other disasters, SBA disaster loans are the primary source of federal assistance to help private property owners pay for disaster losses not fully covered by insurance. Homeowners, renters, businesses, and nonprofits are all eligible to apply. Next slide. As I mentioned, homeowners, renters, businesses, and nonprofits are all eligible to apply for SBA disaster loans, but your home or business must be within the declared disaster area and meet other eligibility criteria depending on the type of loan. Next slide. Businesses and nonprofits may borrow up to $2 million to repair or replace buildings, equipment, and other assets. Small businesses and private nonprofits may also apply for economic injury disaster loans to help them recover from financial losses with or without property damage. Homeowners may apply for disaster loans up to $500,000 to make repairs to their primary residence, and homeowners and renters may borrow up to $100,000 to replace the damaged contents of their home as well as their cars. And additional funding may be borrowed to cover mitigation costs to protect your property against future damage. Next slide. Here are some examples of what a disaster loan could cover for homeowners and renters. The SBA encourages all affected to apply because even if you are approved, you are under no obligation to take the loan. You can also delay your decision on whether to take the loan, you are approved for by up to six months, and delay the disbursement date of the loan even beyond that. So, whether or not these loans fit into your recovery plan, it's a good idea to apply before the March 31st deadline for physical damages and have that option available to you should you decide to take it. Next slide. And here are some examples of what a disaster loan would cover for losses sustained by a business, both physical and economic injury. Those applying for economic injury loans do not necessarily have to have sustained physical damages as a result of the wildfires. The threshold for an economic injury business loan is you would have to be able to meet those obligations, be it payroll, monthly lease obligations, or accounts payable were it not for the disaster. Next slide. Additional funding is also available for homeowners and businesses for mitigation costs, up to 20% of the total verified loss on the physical structure. Next slide. Interest rates for SBA disaster loans are as low as 4% for businesses, as low as 3.625% for nonprofits, and as low as 2.563% for homeowners and renters with terms up to 30 years. Interest does not begin to accrue and payments are not due until 12 months from the date of the first loan disbursement. There is no cost to apply and no obligation to accept a disaster loan if approved. Next slide. Here's a breakdown of the application process. Those interested in applying may go to lending.sba.gov. After a loan is approved, an initial disbursement will be made within five business days. Next slide. There are three ways to apply for an SBA disaster loan. The first is by applying online at lending.sba.gov or by email at disaster customer service at sba.gov. A second way to apply is by calling the SBA at 800-659-2955. The third way to apply, which I would recommend is the best way, is by going to one of two disaster recovery centers located within Los Angeles County. Customer service representatives are available there to answer questions about our disaster loan program, explain the application process, and help individuals complete their application. This in-person individualized attention is often the best way to complete an application. There is a disaster recovery center located at 540 West Woodbury Road in Altadena and another located at UCLA Research Park West at 1850 West Pico Boulevard in Los Angeles, and both centers are open Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Next slide. Here are a few resources with additional information and the contact information for the SBA's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. Thank you once again to the City Council for allowing me to present tonight.
So, I did notice that the deadline for damage was today, right?
Actually, it was extended today. So, the new deadline is March 31st.
Okay.
For physical damages, and then for economic injury, it's October 6th.
Okay.
Yes, you can use it for mitigation, up to 20% of total verified loss for the disaster loan. Losses a result of the wildfires or straight-line winds.
And do you know the boundaries, the current boundaries of the declared disaster? Is it all LA County, or is it just the fire areas?
No, it's all of Los Angeles County, and then the economic injury is Los Angeles County as well as Orange, Ventura, San Bernardino, and Kern.
Got it. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience have a question before we move on?
All right. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to move into public comments. I've got two groups here. I've got people that are here to talk about the annexation proposal, and that's the item 20, and I've got a separate group. So, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go ahead and do public comments for items that are not associated with, are, for comments not associated with item 20, and then I'm going to move up item 20 to follow immediately after public comment so that those of you that are here, you don't have to stay through all of our administrative stuff and wait until item 20 shows up, but that's okay to do. All right.
Good evening, everyone. I just have the usual, another update on the different projects, and some of them are coming to, close to the next phase of my efforts. So, the first one has to do with the project I've been working out with using Google Earth to map out all the fire hydrants in La Habra Heights. That should be, the first phase of that should be done in about a week. Basically, that means that everything that I can possibly map, as far as the hydrants, will be mapped in about five days. There are some that I cannot map because they're in private roads, or Google Earth was taking pictures of La Habra Heights on the same day as the trash pickup day. So, yeah, that meant some of them are hidden. So, I need to verify that with the, hopefully, the fire department will help me with that next phase of verifying and finding those hydrants that are not, were not visible or not available because of private roads. So, that's the first update. So, once that's done, in about a week, I'll start the next effort that I'm trying to work on, which is the initial phase of mapping out this, in the same process, the storm drains of La Habra Heights. The, didn't realize this until someone provided to me the actual latitude and longitude locations of these storm drains. There's two points. There's the inlet and the outlet. So, I'm estimating, I've got about 500 points to map out for that. So, I am looking for volunteers. I did find a volunteer that's helping me out for last week or so to help me finish up the first part of the hydrants. So, that's progress because, yes, I can sit at home for hours, for days, just mapping out stuff. So, yes, that's coming up. That's the next phase, getting those storm drains started. I'm also working on, I've got a few neighbors who keep asking me for a map of the basic egress roads that we have in case of evacuation, in case of an emergency, which roads can they use to get out. We have somewhat of a map, and it needs to be finished. So, actually, I'll be working on that this, on that this week to try to get that finished. It just needs to be added on. A few more roads need to be included, some need to be taken out, that's, needs to be cleaned up, and I'll provide that to the EPC. Maybe we can distribute it to whoever's interested in whatever form, whether it be electronic or printed form. Another interesting project that I've just started is, as you know, we've had this Genesis project going as far as the different, the five evacuation zones that are plugged in through Genesis Internet system that they have. They also have an option to have an acoustic notification. It basically implies that if there's an emergency, anybody, or certain group needs to be evacuated, certain zone needs to be evacuated, that this acoustical system would go off and verbally would say folks living in zone 775, it's time to get ready to evacuate, or something of the sort, whatever may be happening. So, it's another option. I am still working with the Genesis people to get the rest of the information that we'll be passing on to either you and/or the fire department. I'm just gathering the information, that's all I'm doing. Let's see. I'm estimating we're about halfway's done completing our online and offline volunteer signup form. It's got about 20 options so far, and they've been somewhat categorized, and it's got the potential, once the website, our website, the La Habra Heights website is updated, to eventually be included permanently in the website so we can have a permanent version as it is. What I have now is through Google, Google Form, which is to say, it's, basically, I own the form, and the email that I have for, in that form for contact would be beautify, beautify L H H at gmail dot com, which, that's the same email I use for the Hacienda Road Cleanup Project. But that's in the process of being finished. Let's see. The other thing is April 26th is coming up. That's when we do the Hacienda Road Cleanup, just a shout-out for anybody who's interested in helping out. Last but not least, that's, oh, a couple more things. I did get finally recertified for my CERT training, and I'm actively, proactively trying to get the La Habra Heights CERT team to go to and promote it to other La Habra Heights residents to join. They have exercises every two months or so, so that would be something that we need to get involved with. And like I said, I'm proactively trying to get this done. I've been contacting them and emailing them so we can hopefully get this done. I did talk to a couple of La Habra Heights CERT folks when I was at City Hall, La Habra, La Habra. I talked to a couple of people from La Habra CERT team when they were at the La Habra City Hall CERT training that happened last, a couple of weekends ago. So, last thing I have is that a few more residents have actually stepped up and are trying to join the Fire Watch group, and that I've also bought my own radio norm, so I will be returning the radio that you let me back to you so you can give it to the next person that's coming on to Fire Watch. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, John, just one thing. Can you, for the CERTs, can you email me how you want people to get in touch with you or coordinate on CERT? I'd like to add it to an article that I'm going to write.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Good evening, council members. This is Susan Brooks. I'm at 335 West Skyline, and I am here representing the La Habra Heights Improvement Association. As you know, the Improvement Association does a lot of activities within the city like Halloween Hunt, Morning with Santa, Music in the Park, Yard Sale, along with Gym Maintenance, and I think the new president for the fire department, they are very active. And I am here to talk about the newest activity, which is the Easter egg hunt, and that will be April 12th. And it's a very good family activity. We've been holding it for a number of years now. We have egg, where the kids go out and do three different egg hunts for age-appropriate groups, and then we also have face painting, pony rides, petting zoo, and a balloon twister. So, it starts on, at 10 o'clock, about Easter Bunny will arrive maybe about 10, after 10, and I will be out of the country during this. I'm chairman of it, but unfortunately, I'll be out of the country, but Angela Owen will be co-chairing this with me for this event. So, I'm encouraging everyone to come. It's free for everyone who attends, just, we ask that you bring a bag of individually wrapped candy. So, mark your calendars, April 12th, 10 o'clock a.m. in the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and residents of the city of La Habra Heights. My name is Kathy Taverni. We live in, via Patricio, in La Habra Heights. This is my husband, Tom. We're here to ask about the situation with ware disposal. During the last week, I've been in touch with each one of you, and each of you has assured me that the situation is being looked into regarding the scout service. I've been assured that the city manager is looking into it and that the city attorney is looking into it. I would like to reiterate that between the time we moved into the house as brand-new construction in April of 2002 until August of 2024, we had trash collection by the regular-sized trash trucks, not small ones. We didn't have scout service. We're having a difficulty with ware disposal because they are insisting that we should pay for scout service on our street. We don't have scout service. That's a fraudulent charge. I took pictures, which I sent to you all, of the smaller-sized trash truck collecting the trash in our neighborhood. For 22 and a half years, we had the large-size ones, and they were perfectly adequate. There was no problem with the street. So, I would like to find out what has transpired.
So, like I said, we can't have a two-way conversation with you during the council meeting, but I can ask...
Yeah, I can speak to it. Yeah, so, your issue has been passed on to the city attorney's office and an individual in my office who's a trash expert. That's, I know, it sounds funny, aren't all lawyers. But, so, we're looking at those issues. City manager's aware of it, and we're going to track down and be communicating with you as to what can be done.
Okay. We have our trash carts sitting in front of our house unemptied because Ware would not collect them because we're not paying for those fraudulent charges.
Okay, well, I would contest fraudulent charges, but I, we understand your issue, and, you know, we'll be getting back to you. I don't have an answer for you right now because we are talking to Ware as we speak.
Can you give me an approximate date that we might hear something?
Probably by the end of the week. End of the week is what we're trying to get it resolved by?
Okay, all right.
Now, I'd like to say one other thing. I looked online, you know, for anyone who wanted to do diligence on Ware, and on Yelp, they have 115 reviews. 103 of them are ones or less. Three of them are twos. 92% were negative views, and there are three common themes. One, Ware lies to everybody. Look at the, you can look at those reviews. They just lie all the time. The second one is they overcharge, and they charge fraudulently. And the third one is they extort them to pay those charges by saying they're not going to collect their trash unless they pay them. And sadly, in there, I saw two or three people that moved out of the areas they lived in because nobody would resolve the issue with Ware. They are not a credible company. You can look online yourself.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm just going to pause for just a moment.
Well, I mean, the individual's allowed to say what he wants in public comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for interrupting you. Go ahead.
Okay. Those are available for anybody to look at, by the way. You can go online and find the reviews of Ware, and what I said is 100% the truth. And I went to the Air Force Academy where honesty and integrity were drilled into me. I spent 38 years in the military where honesty and integrity were essential, and I refuse to be intimidated by fraudulent charges and extortion. That is not the way I want to live. That's not the way any resident should live.
Any other public comments not associated with the annexation? Okay. I am going to move up item 20, which is, second. So, item 20 is consideration of the annexation of the Los Angeles County Islands. Rafferty?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I'll give you a brief report on this one. So, within the city of La Habra Heights, there are two areas that are sort of in our LAFCO, or the agency that controls how cities are annexed and incorporated, and they call them spheres of influence. So, those are areas that are unincorporated county areas that are generally directly adjacent to properties or borders of communities. For La Habra Heights, there's two areas. There's the neighborhood that's just across the street from City Hall, and then there's another neighborhood on the very east side of town that are in that, the sphere of influence area from those. So, within those areas, they are sort of looked at by LAFCO as being like a primary to be incorporated within the city, within the boundaries of the community, and we'll sort of clean up the areas and the boundaries. Those two pockets of areas likely have La Habra Heights addresses, obviously, because our post office that services us also services those neighborhoods, similar services and all of those things that go along with it. Since there are a couple of areas there, there is a process to go through to look at annexing. So, you can look at a process to be able to go out and incorporate those into the city and move them to become part of the city and no longer County Islands. That way, city would provide services to those areas, and they would become part of our community. So, this was an item that Councilmember Steffler wanted to look at, the potential for looking at annexing those two areas within our sphere of influence to incorporate them into the community and bring them into city La Habra Heights, so we would be able to provide services for those communities and look at those various areas. But I can turn it over if Mr. Mayor Steffler has any more comments or thoughts.
Maybe what we'll do, Greg, is we'll hear from the public, and then we can take what we heard from Rafferty, the public, into our consideration of this item. All right. Yeah, come up here because we televise these and we record them and...
How do I know? So, my name is Lizette Lieberman. I live on 180. Someone that moved into that property in 1961, I have wonderful property taxes, and I want to know... in 1961, I have wonderful property taxes. And I want to know, La Habra Heights, anyway.
Can't give official tax advice, but the answer's no. Oh, no, as far as property taxes, your base property tax.
Okay, but it will affect other areas?
Well, there's, we can talk about it in more detail, but there is, the city's in a fire district. I don't know if that area's in the city's fire district. So there are other assessment districts that potentially could be included on your property that currently aren't.
Okay. And would we have to have that crappy garbage collection, or would we stick with Valley Vista?
That was funny. Don't believe everything you hear. Yes, generally, a city's trash collection is citywide under the city's franchise agreement. Yes. I don't even, who'd get, does trash in the County Islands now?
Valley Vista.
Valley Vista, okay. So yes, it would most likely be changed over to ware.
Last question. Street parking, would not affect my home, but my neighbors are often multi-generational with lots of cars. They park on the street. Would they have to find new parking, or?
We, that, this meeting isn't really that level of detail. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But our, I mean, I think our commitment would be that, you know, we would have, just as we've done in the fire, so we just had a public workshop on issues that are important. We would probably hold a public workshop where we can have the back and forth, I think, that you desire to have.
Okay.
So if we, if we do move forward, more than likely, that's usually the mechanism that we use so that the shackles kind of come off and we can have a two-way conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And we appreciate, let me just say that this is my, my idea. We appreciate all the residents in that, these potentially annexable areas, to come and tell us what's going on. What do you feel about, what do you think about it? For our purposes, we're just attempting to help the county eliminate these islands. That's our, our primary purpose is to do that because it's very costly for the county to service islands when they're servicing from miles and miles away. So maybe we would be a better fit for you folks, and that's what we're going to try to examine. So thanks for coming, and we'll, we'll have a meeting on it.
Okay, thanks.
Melinda Larrabee?
Hi, my name's Melinda Larrabee. I live on Ard Shield. I don't live on the island. My question is, if the annex, annexation happens, does that affect the housing element numbers?
All good questions. Mary, and I'm trying to, sorry, I'm having a hard time with the aide?
Yes.
And you're, sorry, you're president of the La Habra Heights-
I'm president of the La Habra Heights Community Association, and that is, that encompasses Agave Avenue, Passiflora, Mondo, and Papyrus. Those are the streets that would be involved in the annexation. We are a group of 100 homes, and actually, Mondo has additional homes that I'm not including because they are not a part of our association. I myself am the president. We have quarterly dues. We have three private parks. And it's, it's a private association. My, my first question is, how, we would like to know how La Habra Crest would benefit. We call ourselves colloquially La Habra Crest, because obviously, we're not really La Habra Heights. I mean, 40-plus homes are, and then 60 are La Habra. So it's kind of odd because part of our association is serviced by the sheriff, and part is serviced, 60 homes are serviced by the City of La Habra Police Department. All of our water is La Habra city water. Myself, I lived on La Floor Drive for 13 years, so I'm well acquainted with the city of La Habra Heights, and we thought they were great. We had nothing but positive experiences with them. We, our residents, are concerned about how this would increase our costs, like an additional city tax that would, might be levied onto us. That's one of our concerns. And also, we would like La Habra Heights to know that our parks are private, and they would not be open to the city of La Habra Heights for their use because we pay quarterly fees solely for the, the care and maintenance of those properties, and we pay for the water for those properties. So we would need you guys to know that you guys could not use our parks because we pay for them. So my, mostly my question is, what benefit would La Habra Crest gain from part of our association joining you? How would that help us? So that's, that's my major question.
All right. So those are all the public comments that I have. Greg, I'll turn it over to you.
Sorry, Councilmember Steffler. I don't believe your, your mic might not be on. I don't think they're picking up your audio.
There you go.
Okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. The last thing we want to do is create a problem. We're hoping to kind of solve a problem, frankly. The neat part about the general area here is that they're right across from City Hall. So you're right next to, we've had a lot of people come in wondering about building permits, and we have to send them Del Monte to the county planning people. We've had people, we have a wonderful fire department that's right across the street from us, and they don't have to travel a long distance to get to you. So we think there's benefits. Now, whether those are outweighed by the negatives, I don't have a clue. The only way we're going to figure that out is, hopefully today, we'll vote to assign a couple of people to do a due diligence analysis, look at the positives and the negatives, and find the things that might be problems. And I certainly think that your HOA is going to be one of those issues that's difficult. I'm a lawyer by training, and so I'm, my brain is kind of spinning trying to figure out what the effect of this would be. There's, it's been funny, though, that we talk about housing, and there's a, there's a fairly significant legal issue now cropping up down in, somewhere in Orange County, over whether HOA's bylaws can supersede the housing rules. And that's not decided yet, and I'm sure that our city attorney will help me figure that out. But it's interesting to, to, to hear that there's this HOA. So what we're going to hope to do tonight is just pass a resolution that assigns two people to examine this. We'll come back later, in a month or two, after we've done some due diligence. We'll probably talk to you, probably try to get a copy of the bylaws of your HOA so we understand that a little bit better. Try to understand if there are CCNRs on the property there, conditions, covenants, and restrictions that run with the land. Those are all things we should understand as we attempt to put this in a box and see if it's feasible or not. And I really appreciate you coming and telling us about this. We didn't know about that. So it's a good thing.
Thanks, Greg. Todd?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, since I asked the question, so really, whatever you got going on as the HOA, this wouldn't impact any of that. You'd still be in HOA. You'd have all those powers. It's really, it's going to be an analysis, is it better being part of the city or being, or part of the county, right? All the state law stuff's going to impact you either way, but it's, is it better to be in the city or the county? What?
If you own the park, the park's yours. It doesn't become a city park. We don't, this, all this is really a redrawing of the jurisdictional maps. Whatever's private remains private. Yeah.
Can I just ask-
You should probably come up here if the mayor, yeah.
So that, I, I live at 612 Mondo, so I'm in the same area. And it's, that development was built in 1965, which predates the city. I'm kind of curious why it wasn't drawn into that area right from the get-go, and kind of why now? And the other, just another thought was, it just seems like it's actually more logically, since you can't even get into the neighborhood without going through La Habra, it's not physically possible, that it would be actually more part of Orange County and La Habra rather than La Habra Heights. It's just the physical layout of it. So those would be my thoughts to talk to who's ever doing the due diligence.
Thank you. So Greg, you want to, I think, to move forward? You want to get a group together, get a subcommittee together of the council to look at this? We probably should have, we've heard a couple of questions that I think are good tonight that we probably should research a little bit more. Do we want, do you want to talk to the other council members and see who would be willing to participate on that? And then we can agendize this next month to come back and, Art, have you already, do we already have a, another willing participant?
I'm willing right now.
Okay. So there we go. So we've got a, a subcommittee of Brian Bergman, Greg. Their, their contact information is available on the website, so feel free to shoot them, you know, your questions.
Don't shoot them. Metaphor in speaking.
Send them, send them your questions. And, you know, rest assured that, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a process that we'll go through. My guess is, like anything, we'll have a workshop where people can come in and meet, and meet with the attorney. Usually, we have the city attorney there. We have most of the council there to answer these questions, and we're a little bit more able to have that, that dialogue that I think everyone wants to have tonight. We just, it's tough to do. My city attorney's already upset with me for interrupting public comment earlier, but we'll, we'll, we'll just agree that right now, it's you and, and Brian that'll work on that subcommittee, and we'll agendize this monthly as, to get updates. Does that sound about right?
May I make a comment, please?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, basically, I want to thank the people from across the street, basically, coming to our meeting. One of the problems, I think, we had over the years is a lack of communication between our side of Hacienda and your side of Hacienda. I think it might be helpful, if nothing else comes of this committee, that we can establish a regular communication, because what we do affects you, and we don't want to mess you up too badly and vice versa, I'm sure. So we, we want to make you feel kind of included in the city, even if you're not part of the city. So I encourage you to, however this issue develops, to continue a liaison and communication with the city and vice versa. Thank you.
Thanks, Norm. Any other comments?
No, just one comment that, thanks for everybody that came and gave us that information. And I guess what I would be looking for, and hopefully Greg too, is more information. Questions are good, but information like the homeowners association, things like that, and what works for you and what doesn't work for you, and the people that lived in those pockets for a long time, you know, what they would like to see or not like to see, that type of information would be very helpful for myself.
All right. So I think we've got a path forward. Greg and Brian will be part of the subcommittee that will look at this. We'll agendize it monthly. For the folks that showed up, you know, if, I don't know if you, if you, on our website, you can go into and look at the city council agenda, and then these items have a link to them, and then the details that are, you've got it. So feel free to, to share those. You know, if there's stuff you want to get us, so if there's information you'd like to get us for the council meeting, the city manager and Christina can help you with that. So if you'd like to include stuff in the agenda, just get it to them. What, do we need about a week in advance before the council meeting? Yeah. So if there's stuff you'd like us to see, get it, get it to us about a week in advance, and we can put it in the agenda. Yes, sir.
And just for the communities, annexation is a long process. You have to go through this county entity called LAFCO, so it's, this isn't happening anytime soon. It is going to be a pretty drawn-out process, just so you know. Yeah.
All right. Anything else on this, on this item? Okay, I'm going to go back then to the beginning. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to go back to the beginning then. I think we left off, we just finished public comments. I don't think there's any more. We'll go to committee comments. I don't see any committee members here, right? Kathy, do you have a, you don't have a habitat update or anything, Kathy? No? Okay. All right. City council comments. Done? All right. Administrative reports, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. It's just, we're going to get some rain this week, so if you haven't already checked your drains and gutters, and if you need sandbags, there are, sandbags are available in front of the front door of City Hall, and there's fresh sand at the park and the lower parking lot, close to the arenas. So everything is out there for you, and please be prepared for a little bit of rain this week.
All right. City attorney?
No comment.
Community development.
Building inspections have actually been pretty busy lately, so if you are, have a permit in that process, make sure to try to call in and get scheduled as soon as you can, since we have been quite busy in the, in the building inspection side of it as well.
Fire chief?
Good evening, city council. The report of this February call load for the La Habra Heights Fire Department is presented there. We had 54 calls this month, which is pretty much average. We, as you guys have noticed, we average between 50 and 60 every month. We are seeing a lot more activity in La Habra Heights proper, not so much work with the county, at least on this month. Should also be aware that Brian Jorgensen, Chief Jorgensen, has taken over the BCP program. I think that he's been interfacing with all the different agencies or groups, committees that are necessary for him to succeed in his role as the new brush clearance program coordinator, as well as, as our paramedic coordinator. So I'm happy to see that the, the new administrative team that we put together in the fire department is all starting to come together, and we're looking forward to moving into the brush season this year with, with Ryan at the helm. And that's all I have for the report.
Do you, I, I know you were saying there's a lot more calls. I'm looking at the list here in, in La Habra Heights. Do you have a way to track responses to the County Islands?
To the County Islands?
Yes.
No, I don't have, I don't have a way of tracking that now. Are you, you mean, if the county got called out and we were mutually responded with the county?
Right. So can you track calls to the County Islands that we get and we service them?
I don't think we have an algorithm in place that would pinpoint those specific areas. When we run with the county, we just get put on a ticket with the county. And mostly, it's on Whittier where we come adjacent to, not specific to the County Islands.
Okay. If there's a way to, to track calls into that space, I think that's going to be something, because they ask what, you know, intuitively, one of the values is that you've got, what, a one-minute response time to most of these areas here?
Yes.
And probably are the first, you know, resource to show up to a lot of these islands that are right next to City Hall. So that'd be something that I think we should add to the value proposition for that.
It might be. There are individual street names. Most of them are unique-
There are individual street names, most of them are unique to the islands.
Yeah.
And so we could track perhaps by street name. If the street name showed up on a call, we could just know that that was in the island then.
Okay. Let's see what we can do.
All right, thank you. Any, anything else, chief?
That's it.
Okay. Um, thank, oh, by the way, thank you for having your, the other two chiefs show up to our wildfire workshop. They were very instrumental in its success, so thank you for that.
Very well, thank you.
Sheriff's department.
Good evening, city council. We had four residential burglaries last month, one vehicle burglary, one grand theft, petty theft, one hit-and-run, and one traffic collision. Luckily, we reported that there was no violent crime this month, or last month.
And then, same question for you, and, and you in particular, is, my, my guess would be, is that when you're here in the city, if there's an issue in the county island, do those get assigned to you?
Yes, they do, and I do patrol checks in that area. As a matter of fact, I was there a couple days ago. But I am always driving through there. I, I hear some of the residents' complaints about suspicious vehicles, I go check it out, but, very good area. I've spoken to some of the folks over there. Not about this issue, about annexation.
Yeah, it would be interesting if you could, over the next few months, even if it's just informally, track, you know, the calls that end up in that, where you're, where you're responding to the county island from the city?
Yes.
And, and you can think about that.
I think we, we catalog, it's, it's part of the La Habra Heights. We don't, we don't call it county area, so it, it would be in our reports.
I hope we're not getting billed for that.
What's that?
I, that's a question for the city manager.
Oh.
I hope we're, we're not getting billed for the time that our deputy spends in.
No, in, in the unincorporated areas, no. Like, if there's actual response over there, it's, it's not.
Okay.
But because it's in our, our area, it's all tracked.
Got it.
Our, our area.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
One last thing, it's, yeah, it, like the city manager said, it's, it's separate, it's a, it's a different RD, reporting district.
Ah, that's right, yes, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's 1454.
Okay, so it's assigned via that separate RD?
It'll be assigned to the county, it'll be charged to the county.
Got it. So they don't have the same RD that we have?
No, they don't.
Oh, perfect, okay. Makes perfect sense now, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move into the consent calendar. Anybody want any of these polled? Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And John's yes. All right, let's move into the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Pispisa. The item before you tonight is a protest hearing for unpaid brush clearance liens. So there is a total of seven properties that were on the list for consideration, and those properties have been through abatement. So, through the process with brush clearance, we went through the entire process, worked with the owners to try to get them cleared before we went to abatement, went through abatement, provided time for the owners to make payments before coming to lien. So, the ones on there tonight have made it through that process. We did have one property come in today and make the payment for their brush clearance liens. So there's one on Verizon that will come off of the list, and they made the, they made the payment today before the meeting, before that one. We did go through to double-check the properties to see if any have outstanding brush clearance liens on the properties today, and none of the properties on there today have any outstanding brush clearance lien. So, the recommendation for council tonight is to review the project and overrule any protest, if any, offered during the protest hearing, and adopt resolution 2025-10 confirming the report of costs incurred by the city and authorizing the assessments as liens be placed on the tax rolls effective March 10th, 2025. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Well, my two usual questions are, any of these repeat offenders?
There, there is like, two of them on there that have, had their properties abated in the past, but they don't, they have paid those, those liens, the liens are no longer on the properties.
Okay, and the, and the second thing is, has anybody on the list communicated with you about the brush clearance or any other concerns about the abatement, or have they not, have they not contacted you at all?
We have been in contact with them through the process, and no one has talked about not being able to afford the, the abatement process.
But have, have they communicated saying, well, I don't think the brush clearance requirements are, we misunderstand what you wanted us to do and something like that?
No.
Okay, the, one of the things that bothers me, I noticed with the care facility on, Apache Way is, is on the list. Is that the first time they've been on that list, or had problems with brush clearance?
I think they have gone through the abatement process one time prior, but typically, usually they will work with a fire marshal to, to do all their brush clearance. For whatever reason, this particular time, we went out and abated the property.
Okay, here's my concern specifically. First of all, it's a care facility for people having difficulty caring for themselves, so in my mind, they have a, an even greater incentive to, to take care of the brush clearance around the area. So, in other words, they're putting their own clients in danger. Secondly, they're located very close to where the 1955 fire occurred that killed, I believe, six firefighters. And quite frankly, I'm willing to cut people slack if they mess up one time and something like that, or at least try to do something about it. But this is a care facility, they have a license from the state to take care of people having, who can't take care of themselves or having difficulty. And at some point, I'm, I'm not recommending that right now, but at some point, if this continues, we need to consider sending a complaint to the licensing board that gives them a license pointing out that, look, if this keeps on going on, if it, if it's a one-time thing and they correct it and go on, that's one thing, but I'm particularly concerned about, it's a business, not a residence, and their business is taking care of people who would have a very difficult time evacuating on their own. Anyway, that's my, I'm not proposing we take any action except communicate with thought that, look, this can't go on. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Norm. Rafferty, don't they have a business license with the city?
They have a CUP that requires...
Actually, they're, I don't know if you had that conversation with them, but I guess I would like you to have that conversation with them, because I was here when we went through the CUP process for the, for the residents, and in the CUP, there's additional inspection requirements, because we had a big concern with the fire, so I'm troubled that they're on here.
So...
Well, I guess, what's the resolution?
Well, let me just make sure there's no public comment, and then we can, so any public comment on these items? I think we don't have anything online. Okay. All right. So...
I mean, my recollection was, they came in and got extra spaces in their CUP over the, state law requires five or six, and they got an expanded permission.
They went from six to nine, and yes, we approved that, and in the CUP, there were conditions for fire inspection. So, I guess, what I would like to do is approve this, and I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025, as discussed, the city manager spoke, with the, also with the condition that we review that, that the city manager reviews the COP, CUP for appropriate action.
Second, the motion.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And John's yes. All right, I will close the public hearing. All right, item 16. Is that, Angie?
That will be Angie tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Today, I am bringing the fiscal year 2324 annual financial report. We were a little late this year, but still in time to apply for, excuse me, for the award. This is the seventh year that we've compiled this report, and, yes, it is a seventh year. So pretty much, the annual comprehensive financial report, it provides a thorough explanation of the city's fiscal condition and, excuse me, and is the best practice standards for financial reporting. The financial report also includes the leather, the letter of transmittal, our org chart, a list of our principal officials as of the end of fiscal year 2324, and also some of our schedules. In the document, the letter of transmittal's included, as well as the MDNA, which is a management's discussion and analysis, which is written by myself and the city manager. And it serves as an executive summary of kind of everything that's happened in that fiscal year 2324, and also how it has impacted the year. We also met with the auditors, February 11th, so the audit committee comprised of Mayor Portem Inglehart and council member Steffler, and we met with the auditors to review the financial reports, and the committee, the committee recommends that the city, city council receive and file the reports. So we did have, we did have one general recommendation this year, which could be found in the auditor's communication report, and we've already implemented the change in the current fiscal year. So it is recommended that city council receive and file the annual comprehensive financial report, which includes again, limit communication letter, the gas letter, and the financial report for fiscal year ending 2324. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Recommended receive and file?
I, I just have a question. You've mentioned the GAN limit, and we're in compliance with that.
Yes.
We are, we are in compliance with the GAN limit. Is that correct?
Yes, we are. As of 2324, yes.
I know in past years, we had to, I can't remember, it had to go to a vote of the city in, in order to exceed the GAN limit, but I guess we're, we're in good shape. Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I, I don't think we need a motion to receive and file, do we, Todd?
No.
Okay. Angie, thank you for all your work on the, on the audit, appreciate it, and that leads us to item number 17. Is that you, Rafferty, that's gonna talk about this, or does Angie get to talk about her, how great she is?
Angie can talk about how great she is. She's, she's great.
That's your Angie.
All right.
So, we had applied for the GFOWA certificate of achievement for the financial reporting program for the previous year. So, the deadline to apply is, I think, at the end of the calendar year. We did apply, and the GFOWA was in contact with me, kind of going back and forth, answering questions. They have their own committee where they have the reviewers, so it went longer than usual. I, I, they must have had less reviewers this year. But anyhow, we did receive the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the previous fiscal year 2223. We received it back in, I wanna say December, but we had so many items on the agenda, I didn't wanna add one more, so I'm just adding it now. So again, this is for the fiscal year that ended in June 30th, 2023. We did receive a little brass medallion with the year, I believe I put it up, I'm not sure, but it's, it's in our collection, so I'm hoping to fill the plaque. We have, I think, about four spots left, and then we'll have to get a new one. And that's about it. Thank you. Let me know if you have any questions.
Angie, thank you for, you know, the work associated with even just applying for that. It's good to have that supplemental review of our practices and, and get that feedback from those, you know, from those professionals, I'm sure, that look at, city's a lot more complex than ours, but that, to hear that, you know, we're doing the things that we should be doing and being recognized, that not only are we doing them, we're doing it in an, in an excellent fashion, I, I think that's very meaningful, so thank you for your effort there.
I would like to add that most cities do have a budget team. We have, I think our, our team consists of two, two individuals. I'm primarily working on the numbers with the auditors and putting together all the documents, and there are a couple of staff members that do help me kind of put the document together. While I focus on the number and, the numbers and the written portion, they make it look nice and formatted, and really nice, so I'm very grateful to have them. And we, everything we do is manually, we don't really have any, like, web design programs or anything, it's, so it's very, very time-consuming.
And those staff members are?
Jesse Hernandez and Joshua Chavez.
Thank you. Any questions for Angie? Comments?
No, just a big thank you on the fine job that you've done.
All right. Item 18.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The item before you is for a recommendation to purchase a new recruitment and applicant tracking system. In the past, the city has used one company that ended up merging to another company, and through that process, as we made that migration into the new software, it looked like it was gonna be really good and fit very, very, very well, but as we made that migration and started using the software, and primarily, there's two people that, that do most of that work, one is Christina, and the other is Dawn in the fire department, who are primarily responsible for all of our recruitment, so submitting the job ads, communicating with applicants, scheduling interviews, and compiling all of the, the application packets for review by the interviewers. As we made it through there, we just started having some troubles with the, the current company, so since it was not working very well, we started looking at alternatives, and there is another alternative that we found, which was a, a company and a website called NeoGov. So NeoGov is associated with one of the largest government jobs, recruitment websites. So there's a couple of benefits that we get by this new system, if we choose to make that migration to it. And one is, our jobs are posted on this large government website that offers specifically government jobs. So people that are looking for government jobs can go there and find it. And the other benefit too is, everything is embedded within that website, so if there's somebody finds an interest in our application, they can click "Apply," and then start the application right through that process, right through that website. And the one nice thing is, that website, typically people, you know, people seeking jobs create profiles in there, so they have all of their certifications for, like, firefighters, so they have all their certifications that they have already in there, it makes it really simple and fast and easy for them to apply. So there is a, a benefit for the ease of use today. We have a couple of positions we advertise on there, but it transitions you back to our website, so you have to leave that system, go to a different system for those things. So, and then just, we're old-school that way, we have physical papers, we create files, and a lot of the things that were coming out, printing-wise, we're magnifying glasses trying to get to it, so ultimately... So, ultimately, moving to a newer system would be a benefit to staff, and I think for recruitment as well. There is a cost associated with that, so this particular company, we would qualify for the lowest tier of costs, which is about $5,100, just over $5,100 a year. There is an initial setup fee of just over $4,000 for that initial building of our page, integrating all of our information, and developing our application within there. So, staff's recommendation is to authorize the city manager to terminate the agreement with Criterion and enter into an agreement with NeoGov based on forms approved by the city attorney, and authorize the finance manager to amend the fiscal year 2024-25 budget to increase general services account number 101-150-GSD-6235 by $9,356. If you have any questions, happy to answer them for you.
Any questions?
Motion. Move to approve.
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And John, yes. Item nineteen.
Item nineteen, we, last week, we had a defensible wildfire workshop that included representatives from City Council, Planning Commission, and Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Committee. Also there were representatives from our Fire Department, so our deputy chief and our fire marshal were there to answer questions. And Mayor Pispisa helped arrange to have somebody from CAL FIRE, who represents my safe LA, come make a presentation to our residents. Attached to the report are the slides from that presentation. It was a great presentation and provided a lot of insight, opened a good discussion between the people at the workshop and the panelists for it. So, we wanted to share the slides and give you a little more information about that workshop.
Thank you. And, you know, for the folks that weren't able to attend and that are watching this meeting, we did record the meeting. Is that recording available on the city's website?
It is. Where you go to Minutes and Agendas, it will say "Wildfire Workshop." If you click there, the video is available.
And again, and Chief, I'll let you tell me when the time is right, but I would like to give our fire marshals some additional time at a council meeting to come up and reaffirm, I think, what we all heard as part of that workshop, which is the critical importance that our brush clearance program has in the city, along with, you know, the home hardening material and benefits that were presented there. So, I'll let you tell us when that time is right, but I do want to make sure we kind of footstomp what we all heard at that workshop, which is that, you know, our brush clearance program is critical to creating that defensible space. And then would also like to, Rafferty, maybe get with our brush clearance contractors. I know a couple of them have some ideas of how to maybe expedite some of the clearance issues that we have in the city. Any other questions?
Not a question. I just wanted to say, I thought it was a really useful program, and I'm usually bored by this. And I would strongly, if, I know not that many people listen to these meetings, but if you did, you might want to look at it, because the fellow from CAL FIRE, I thought, had some new ideas about how you can protect your home that aren't, are more than just putting mesh over your vents.
Yep. I thought it was it.
And you did a good job, too, John.
Thank you.
I had a couple of comments. I think I look at these recommendations, and some of them, of course, would be very expensive and difficult to, for a lot of owners to put in effect, especially all at once. But perhaps one thing we ought to look at is when the, we approve a new house or perhaps even a major remodel, to start requiring some of these recommendations. And just for consideration, I'm not advocating it, but suggesting we can think about it. For example, requiring all new homes to have a Class A roof. Again, just thinking about that requirement. Secondly, is perhaps we ought to take a good, hard look at our step-back requirements and how often we grant standards modifications to accommodate somebody who wants to build a bigger home or something of this nature. Perhaps we ought to look at the, maintaining the spaces between homes and be a little more strict on that. Anyway, I have no proposals at this time, but just something to think about. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
Just one comment, I guess. We'll get into this probably later on, but we need to, from this workshop, there was a lot of ideas that came up in defensible space and things. And, you know, I'm sort of advocating 200-foot clearance from anything where we've got brush and things. So, the Fire Department can review that and get back to us on it.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things that came out of that workshop that I would expect the city manager to help us track. One of them is the code enhancements we should be working towards. The second is, you know, looking at our brush clearance program through some additional lenses. And the third thing, I think, is the code enforcement component of this, which is ensuring that where we do have clutter, where we do have properties that need to be abated, not just from a brush clearance perspective, but where there is clutter around the house that, you know, could cause, you know, a fire risk. We should start, you know, in my mind, we should start treating those homes like we do, the people that fail to abate from a brush perspective, because they're both as dangerous. So, you know, things where we need to start looking at our codes a little bit more closely with this fresh set of ideas coming out of the recent tragedies in Altadena and the Palisades.
Another thought is, we've granted a lot of standards modifications for houses that are larger and more dominant than those in the neighborhood on condition that they be screened, substantially screened by vegetation. And now, we're being told that while the screening of the vegetation is either too excessive or too, or bad choice of vegetation, it tends to be more flammable. So, again, we ought to think about going forward as to, as to how we grant these status modifications. If we ought to consider them from a fire standpoint also. And quite frankly, if a house is huge, a lot bigger than houses in the area, and it's in violation of general plan lists as property screened, and it cannot be property screened, given the, given the fire, the concerns about fire and so forth, perhaps we ought to take a good look at that also. Anyway, just some thoughts. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Let's move to item twenty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this item was agendized by Councilmember Steffler. Some, just a discussion related to benefit assessment district number seven for street improvement projects. Back in 2017, the city went through the process with the Roads Advisory Committee to look at how to fund improvements and do greater street improvements in the community and continue to raise our PCI and the conditions of our streets. So, at that particular time, the Roads Advisory Committee went through a process, looked at options, worked with the city council, and ultimately, a benefit assessment district was the mechanism that was decided upon the best possibility and opportunity for us to make significant improvements in our roadways. So, over the last several years, we have been completing street improvement projects based on that. So, when the Benefit Assessment District was established in 2018, we were looking at street improvement projects. That would be about $900,000 a year was roughly what was anticipated to be the cost of projects in that particular timeframe for that. So, that was sort of how that program was developed. And we looked at, the city looked at, we would put $500,000 into the program at a base level. That would be with restricted transportation funds and general funds to be able to fund that portion of the project. The remaining would go through the Benefit Assessment District and get assessed on property owners, who would then pay that as part of their property taxes through there. So, we have been going through this process. And when we originally began looking at the Benefit Assessment District, we had a PCI rating. So, it's a Pavement Condition Index, which is done through what's called a PMP or Payment Management Program. So, we have an engineer that comes in and reviews the streets and looks at the different conditions of segments of streets. And then from there, they develop our overall PCI limit. So, what are the overall condition of our streets as an aggregate across the entire community. When we started, we were at 65.1. The goal is to try to get to a 75 PCI rating. So, our last piece, the last PMP that was done, put us at a 70.4, was where we have come. That actual condition was rated back in 2022. So, that was when the engineers went out. We're due to start this process again. They're typically like five-year processes. But we usually do it on a three-year update cycle. So, we're going to be in the process of updating the PMP again this year. We'll work with the Roads Advisory Committee to update the PMP. And we'll get a new survey of the roads, and we'll get a new PCI rating to see where we fall today. To that, we did look at trying to include a little bit of a map. So, there is, there's a map associated with it that highlights the areas where we have done street improvement projects based on Benefit Assessment District. So, this covers the areas that were funded with the Benefit Assessment District. We have completed five projects. We have two that are in design right now. At the end of last month, the Roads Advisory Committee looked at the 60% plans for that. They're reviewing those right now and making some recommendations on any tweaks or changes so we can move into completing those plans and getting that out to bid to start that larger project. We're doing a little bit of a test case with this one, because council at that time said, "Let's look at combining two years' worth of projects into one to see if we can get some economies of scale with a little bit of a larger project." We might get a better unit price or things like that. Because over the last several years, we have seen the cost of construction continuously climb. When we were first doing the projects, you know, the cost for construction was in that $700,000 to $800,000, $900,000 range, about where we were. The last three projects we have done, they have been slowly increasing in a million, 1.2, 1.35. So, we've been seeing an escalating of costs for construction. It's not just unique to La Habra Heights, that we're sort of seeing industry-wide across all the other areas. We've had several other cities say the same thing, that they've opened bids for street projects, and it was like twice what the engineer's estimate was. So, we've definitely seen an increase over the last several years of the cost of the projects. So, the projects we're doing are much greater in costs and obviously more expensive. So, we're putting more money into those particular projects. But it just sort of highlights, we have made it all the way back through the zones. We started, the first project was in Zone 5, which is that northeast corner of the community. And we have worked clockwise around and just completed back to the project. And the ones that are in design are back starting in Zones 5 and 3. So, it's good to see those projects come back around. As part of this particular project, council has also authorized a crack fill project, as every project we do crack fill. That isn't shown on here, because that's something above and beyond the typical street improvement we do. It's something that council wanted to do at the time. And, you know, so decided at least $35,000 to do a crack fill project. This last project we did, we went back and crack filled a project that we did previous to the Benefit Assessment District. So, we called the 1718 project, was crack filled as part of that particular project. So, went back to try to do the maintenance on the work. The areas that we've done work, trying to continue with that maintenance and go back and touch those streets as we move around and continue the longevity of the roads that we have done. So, that's kind of where we are right now as far as Benefit Assessment District. We have a couple of years left and be looking to, looking at funding the roads more as we go along. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Any questions?
I have one. So, we talked a little bit informally about the process we use on streets, whether we actually rip them up and then relay, or whether we lay over. We talked a little bit about trying to understand using all of these past projects, whether we have had failures because we didn't rip off to the underlayment and lay. Is there a way that we can understand better where we made perhaps not the right, the best decision? I understand that there's always inflation, and that's significant to us. But if the, if the method, when you just did Greenview, the public portion of Greenview, we scarfed that all the way down, and then we relayed over it. And my guess is that's going to, having looked at it carefully, that's going to last a lot longer than some of the other work we've done. And part of that is just because there isn't a lot of traffic on that stretch of road. But I'm wondering whether we have a way to learn from the processes we used or we employed. Do you think there is?
Yes, definitely. As you kind of see, like, project-wise size, we did a couple of projects that were just, like, all grind and overlay, no slurry or any other, there's, your typical methods of street improvements are, like, full reconstruct. So, with that, you would remove the entire street, including the base, and you would relay a six-inch base and then a two-inch cap on it. So, you're taking the street all the way down to nothing and then relaying the entire area. Current project we're on, we did that on Deep Canyon, because that street was just, there was a very thin, there wasn't, there wasn't a base underneath there that was strong enough to support the roadway, so we had to rip it off. So, you reconstruct, grind and overlay, which is typically, we'll remove the top two inches of asphalt off the street and then relay two inches of asphalt back down. Then you can look at Cape Seal, which is like a slurry. So, it's an oil with gravel chips in it. Not our preferred method to do the Cape Seal. There's a couple of things there. It's incredibly messy for a long period of time, because as you drive on there, all those little rocks and stones roll off and accumulate and go everywhere. And it doesn't really last that much longer than regular slurry, which is an X-up-down, it's just slurry, which is a thin coat of asphalt with like a sand material in it to provide an extra wear surface on the road. And the last method you do is crack seal, just trying to prevent the water from getting down in there. First project we did was all grind and overlay. The Roads Committee, we looked at it and then worked on trying to apply different methods. So, we did grind and overlay and slurry for two projects, which we sort of found our streets are in need of grind and overlay. It's, there's more streets that are asking to be ground and overlaid than slurry. So, we've moved over the last two projects to move more into the grind and overlay, less into slurry. It may mean we don't do quite as much covering of area. But ultimately, in the long run, you know, an overlaid street, you should get about a 20-year lifespan out of that roadway, whereas a slurry or a Cape Seal, there's going to be a much shorter lifespan to it. So, it gets us a better longevity, it gives us a better chance to be able to get around and then do continued maintenance to them. So, we go back to these zones, work on crack filling to seal any cracks that may have shown up to prevent water from getting down or slurring them to provide some more longevity to get even more life out of them.
Other questions?
The current road assessment, I think you told me expires in 2028. So, would it appear on the property tax bills in 2028? Or is 2027 the last year it would?
I would have to check the exact dates of when the original assessment went on. I think it went on the second half of 2018. So, it would probably appear on the first half of the 2018 assessment, but we can double-check that.
I guess my concern is, in the last, I don't know, two, at least two projects, they've been, the bids have been like $500,000, $400,000 over the projections. And we need to get on our agenda when we're going to, we have to have the people vote on whether they want to renew the assessment. So, that vote has to be in '27 at least. And we need to start before that, making sure the people in the heights understand the problems. So, I don't know if we want to maybe set a target date where we start moving on this. I know there was an assessment, I don't know, 10 years ago, where the city didn't educate, didn't issue, there was no, there were no citizens in favor of the tax. There was some opposition, and the whole road assessment fell off the taxes. And we didn't have money for, do you know how many years it was? I don't know that you were even here then.
I think it was just before I started, was the last time they did. I think it was just before I started was the last time they did the assessment.
I don't know. It was, do you know, Mr. Bergman, was it?
I believe we lost it for two years. I mean, it was a substantial setback that really hurt us going into this. And just a comment that, uh, I mean, we had a pretty good plan here and we pulled it down as tight as we possibly could at that time. But inflation has destroyed this thing. It really has. It's, um, it's, we're not getting what we ever thought due to the inflation and we're going to have to, uh, I agree with what Carol is saying and we need to start having discussions with the community as far as, uh, you know, how we want to move forward with the, uh, you know, assessments and things.
But someone has to calculate what we're going to, I'm assuming that when the origi, when this one was passed, the existing assessment was passed, there was projections to touch practically every, touch practically every street is?
Yeah. So the, the thought process behind this one was generally to raise that PCI level, which means you're, you're doing substantial amounts of work to, to raise that PCI level um, for it. Um, we, obviously to do the Benefit Assessment District, we work with an engineering firm that looks at the conditions of the roads. They will look at where we want to be or go. And then from there, it also looks at current trends as far as like the cost of construction to look at potentially what those things would be like, what are the comfort level of the community and the city is spending it. And we'll work on developing what those engineering studies would be and potential associated costs.
So when is that? Do we, do we schedule that? Probably don't have to start right now, but we need to get started sometime in the next year, I think at least.
More towards the end of the year is probably a good time to be, begin those discussions.
And my recommendation on that, Carol, would be that we look at, we have two assessments, right? We have the fire assessment, we have the roads assessment. I wouldn't want to do those, I, I'd want to make sure we, we kind of looked at, if we're going to go out and do this, we should probably look at both and say, give it, because the same, the same pressures apply to both, right? The, the inflationary costs associated with running a fire department, the inflationary costs associated with running, maintaining our roads are, are both there. You have, you have a need in both areas to really look at them and say, is our road assessment sufficient and is our fire assessment sufficient? And I would think that we'd want to test both of those concurrently and not try to do one and then do the next one. That's, that's just my, my opinion, but they're, like, because I know they're both under pressure right now.
I mean, I'd like to hear from Greg, his Greg agenda is this item, so.
Yuck. So one other thing that has occurred to me that I'm learning more and more about our fiscal position is that we, we have to consider whether or not we even can expand assessments to attempt to level off the cost of, of public safety. Um, the, right now, we're, we're in a poor negotiating position for police services. We're in a position where the, um, two years down the road is not a very favorable look for us unless something happens since we're so limited in terms of what our revenue is. So to me, I would love to see us attempt to package the entire public safety issue together, EMS, fire and, and police, um, and attempt to sell that broadly to the community. Roads is an obvious one, but in roads, we're going to get into these kinds of discussions about, well, did we do it right? Why? And I don't think with regard to public safety, that argument applies. I think we can say to people, look, if we're going to have a stabilized city and we're going to be able to employ enough people to provide benefits to our city, we're going to have to somehow come to grips with the fact that, that police services is uncontrollable for us. I mean, literally uncontrollable. All we can do is cut, all we can do is cut benefits. We can't control the way in which they're apportioned to us. We have very little leverage. And having said that, it would be far better if we, uh, said to people, look, do you really want public safety? If you want it, there's three components, EMS, fire and police.
So I think we're, and I, and I'm going to blame myself for this. I think we're getting a little off the agendized topic, but maybe what we need to do.
We can discuss sometime in the future more broadly, some of those.
But, but I think you're, I, I, I mean, Greg, thank you for bringing up the item because the item is stimulating the conversation around our need to look at all the, all the issues that are impacting us and determine, you know, maybe, maybe we roll these things up going forward into a public safety assessment rather than these individual ones. Just something to think about.
Well, I, I just, the, the, the point is it's all, it's all fiscal issues.
Yep.
This is all a fiscal issue. This isn't really, it's not much public policy, but if you're going to argue for, uh, adjusting for fire and, and EMS, then it's logical that you would consider at least that. Now, how we, we can certainly agendize it sometime and have an open discussion about it, but I don't think, I think you have a better argument with the public if you're honest with them about each of those three components that make up public safety.
Yep.
They're all important, equally important to each of us and.
So make sure I'm clear. Roads, police and fire are the three. Yep. Okay.
Well, fire includes paramedics. I don't know if that's four.
Right, right, right. Yeah. No, I would, I would roll that up into the one. Okay. All right. Good discussion. Thank you, Carol, for, I think you started it. So thank you for.
Greg started.
Well. All right. Any other discussion on this item? All right. I guess we have to pay some bills.
Yes. So, uh, next item before you is the replacement of a main waterline manifold, um, uh, at the park. Uh, so back in early February, we actually received a call from a resident, contacted Grace, we're seeing in the morning that there was some flooding, um, in the park. You can see some of the pictures there. You can see the, the water that was out there. Um, after looking at it, it, we determined that somebody had actually broken into the cage that covers our backflow preventer, um, and cut off the whole section of, it included backflow, pressure regulator, um, valves for the sprinkler system and some of those things. So all of that was cut off. We contacted the Sheriff's Department. Our wonderful Deputy Beljan came out and took a, took a report for us from there. But obviously we, we had, uh, park rentals that were upcoming, so we needed to get the water done. So we did it on an emergency basis, um, and hired a contractor to go out and do it. And they actually did it in the rain. Uh, so we were very thankful for them being able to get out there so fast and, and take care of it, even though it was raining, um, at the time for it. But, uh, so we did do a, an emergency measure to be able to put that back into place. So, um, the recommendation tonight is just to authorize the finance manager to amend, uh, the budget for nine thousand four hundred and seven dollars to account one oh one dash four fifty, PWD sixty-six-ten for the replacement of the main waterline manifold, which includes the master valve, pressure regulator valve, pressure, uh, pressure backflow and other gate valves and repair a spigot, um, that was done by California Arbors and Complete Tree Care. If you have any questions, happy to answer them for you.
So what have we done to prevent this from happening again? Because these, I mean, obviously these copper thieves, that probably was brass and copper there.
Yes.
Uh, that's what they were off after. So have we built a cage around this thing? Are we doing something to prevent this from happening?
There actually currently is a cage around it. They cut the lock off that was on there. Um, so we have replaced the locks with a much larger, harder to cut locks, um, on the cage to, to prevent them from accessing it. So there, they, they went in and used the universal key to remove the padlocks that were on the, on the cage that covers this whole manifold today.
So do we think that's going to be sufficient or do we need to think about approving some additional funds or have someone go? I mean, that's a lot of money you can have a.
We could definitely look at, if council is okay with providing some additional funding, look at different ways to do it. We might be able to enclose it in a, in a box so it's harder to get to, to sawzall off or try to clip or cut through with a torch and make some improvements to it.
An ounce of prevention. So yes, I would, as part of this approval, would, as we make the motion, also ask the count, ask the staff to look at additional hardening of that, that prevention device.
Yeah, like you said, you can put a heavy box around it or you have to come in from the bottom. But the other thing I was going to talk about is, do we have any, do we have any cameras up there for any surveillance at all?
Uh, we currently don't have any cameras at the park.
And I guess maybe we should take a look at that and get some pricing for some, uh, cameras aren't that expensive anymore, so. I don't know what the council feels about that.
I, I, I would, so a couple of things, um, an ounce of prevention again. Uh, I, I'm surprised that we haven't had more vandalism at the park, given, you know, hopefully the, the, you know, we keep the lights on there. We have other things that hopefully prevent it, but I'll, I'll second what Council Member Bergman is, is, is bringing up. I think we should have some type of video surveillance, even if it's reviewed after the fact to give the Sheriff's Department that oversight. But, um, also signage is cheap. Um, basically putting up signs that there's video surveillance, whether there is or isn't, might be another option that we look at, um, to try to prevent some of this from happening. But, um, yeah, now that we're having this happen, I think we need to probably step up the surveillance of the park, especially around the gym building.
I do hope the people who committed the theft are not listening to our council meeting tonight. I am sorry I couldn't resist that, but, uh, we do need to discuss, and there are things we need to discuss, uh, uh, individually with the city manager and so forth. They have some other ideas which I'll keep it myself at this point. Thank you. I, I'm sorry for teasing you a little bit on that. I couldn't resist.
Oh, that's, um, I feel pretty safe having that discussion, Norm, knowing the number of people that watch our council meetings.
Do we have any other copper lying around that we need to protect or have you already done that? Or isn't there any other?
I, what's exposed is mostly right there. Um, everything else is buried. Uh, we, we do have one here at City Hall, but it is also in a cage.
So if we do hardening, we should probably do it at both locations.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion? Or is there further discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the monies and adjust the budget accordingly and that we, uh, also have staff do the hardening for the lock so it's not, so you can't just go in there with a sawzall. And also, uh, look at, uh, surveillance and what that's going to cost and bring that back.
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I'm yes. All right. Broken sprinklers.
The park, yes. Uh, we do have, we've been having some work done on the sprinkler system at the, at the park. And as part of it, we've found there's quite a few broken valves, um, in the parks, I mean valves that run to the main lines through it. Um, so staff reached out to the contractors and to get quotes to replace, um, six broken water valves at the park, um, that are in, in boxes and buried below. So nothing that somebody is like stealing or tampering with. It's just over time, age and water pressure and those, those sorts of things, um, to replace those. So obviously, uh, we found six. We'd like to repair all six of those. Um, so we reached out to companies to get bids and quotes and the lowest came from Coleman's Landscape, uh, at, at three thousand four hundred dollars to make those, those replacements. So staff is requesting that, uh, City Council authorize funds to the Public Works Account of one oh one dash four fifty, PWD sixty-six-ten, uh, for the cost of repairing six broken sprinkler valves, um, totaling three thousand four hundred dollars, um, for Coleman's Landscape. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Questions? Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
John Chess. All right. Item twenty-four.
Uh, so item twenty-four is a request to utilize the Los Angeles Conservation Corpse for litter abatement services, um, for two areas. One along Hacienda Road, the other is along Harbor Boulevard. Um, in the past, the city has used some Cal recycling funding that we have towards cleaning and reducing waste and reci, and utilizing recycled, um, materials. They give us a grant we can apply for and get, uh, for those ones. So, uh, we, we do have some money that has been budgeted in the budget related to that grant. Um, and in the past, we have done things like replace the trash cans at the park. We have put in recycled milk jug picnic tables and benches and things like that. So we've done most of those projects. Um, we have also in the past worked with the, um, LA County or the LA Conservation Corpse to do litter abatement. Um, so we've reached back out to look at Hacienda and Harbor Boulevard and to our two major thoroughfares that have pretty heavy traffic loads to them. Um, so this was a request to do traffic abatement twice a month. So for the litter, litter abatement twice a month along those stretches of roadways. Um, so essentially Hacienda would clean, get cleaned once a month and Harbor we get cleaned once a month, uh, for this one. So the cost for that service for the remainder of this fiscal year is about eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty cents. Um, they do all of the work. They come with a supervisor. They have a group of people that are usually young adults that are in there and learning work and life skills as part of the, the Conservation Corpse, uh, uh, idea and mantras and what they do. So they provide that job training for that. So those individuals are, are working for them and getting a paycheck, but also learning a skill and doing those things. They come with the appropriate traffic control to provide safety for the, the people doing the actual work along the roadways. Um, so this is something we've done quite a bit over the years. Um, we haven't done it over the last few years, but, uh, something we're requesting to do. So the, the recommendation is for the City Council to authorize city manager to enter an agreement in a form approved by the city attorney with the Los Angeles Conservation Court for litter abatement services in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So I thought the county had maintenance responsibilities for Harbor. Does that not include?
They do.
Picking up the litter on Harbor Boulevard?
They do. Usually they don't come out and do anything until we start complaining about what it looks like over there. And then a lot of times, mostly what they're doing is just the, like weed abatement, mowing down all the tumbleweeds and the, the weeds that started popping up along the, the median along Harbor. So they will go out and clean it, um, when we poke at them to come do it.
We, should we be, I mean, I'd rather do Hacienda every month than pay for us to go maintain. I thought that, again, that was part of the widening agreement, if I remember correctly, the widening agreement with the county for Harbor was they were supposed to maintain that and keep it clean and.
They, I mean, we don't have any authority realistically to do any, like, they own and control Harbor, so.
Seems like we could work through Han's office if nothing else.
Yeah. I'm just saying that if we're going to spend the money, I'd rather have, I mean, Hacienda gets, I mean, I, I'd rather, i- if we, and if we need to do the other east and west too, right? Rather than spend money on a road that's supposed to be maintained by the county, I'd rather have us poke county a little harder than spend our money on that and spend, have them.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So how, is this recycle money, it's a grant that we have or how much is it?
Yes.
I, I can elaborate a little more. Um, so we do apply every year. It's based on the population. Um, unfortunately, we receive the minimum, which is five thousand per fiscal year. And they do have guidelines, so we're very limited as to what we can use the money on. Um, we can use it on, like Rafferty said, to purchase like beverage, uh, recycling containers, which we did a few years ago at the park, trash cans that are made out of, uh, recycled beverage containers, the picnic benches. We could also use it towards like a water refill station. Um, litter abatement is, is one of them and outreach and like just educating the public. So it's really limited as to what we can use the, the, the funding on. And it's only five thousand per year. Um, and I believe we have about seventeen thousand, but five thousand of it's about to lap, so we should probably use it or we lose it.
There's no way to use this for brush clearance again along?
No. Um, well, yes, but it's, according to the guidelines, it's, it's really limited. I have just like the little cheat sheet pulled up here. Um, so litter cleanup events must include beverage containers as part of the waste stream and to be recycled. Uh, the program may fund supplies, personnel and safety items. So if it's for. So if it's for, you said brush clearance or, I don't know about brush clearance, because brush clearance isn't really involved...
I was thinking the Conservation Corps.
Plastic, recycled.
And the other question I had was, okay, it says Harbor Boulevard from Wellington Lane to Arbolita, and those streets aren't in the Heights, and then it says Blue Line Stream by the Hacienda Trail. So what, what would be picked up? What areas would be picked up?
So like on Harbor Boulevard, it would be within our city limits. Those are the two intersections that are closest to our city borders. So Wilmington is the street just before Vantat Point at the north end of town, and Hacienda has our rolling heights on that side over there, and Arbolita is the, the intersection just south of our, our city border with, between us and La Habra. So they're, they're just trying to describe the boundaries without saying city limit to city limit, trying to give some representation as to where that is and approximation to it. The Blue Line Stream is the channel that runs along the west side of the park, so there, there's that concrete channel and the lower trail at the park. That's the Blue Line Stream that gets cleaned, because that's an asphalt lined, or, sorry, concrete lined.
So this isn't on Hacienda Boulevard at all?
No, it does include Hacienda, so it would be litter along Hacienda, including the Blue Line Stream area. So that, that lower trail, the channelized portion of the stream that runs along the west side of the park.
Is that what that says? Under the scope of work?
If, if you don't want to do it, we don't have to do it. If you want us to go back and change, then we can remove Harbor and just say Hacienda and east and west and, and make a revised, get a revised bid from, from Conservation Corps to look at.
So are they going to pick up all of Hacienda?
When they do it, they pick up, yeah.
From non-city limits to non-city...
Yeah.
And then, okay.
Well, I, my concern, I guess, is that how long can that money accumulate? Or is there any timeline, timetable on that?
Sorry, there is, I'm, off the top of my head, I don't have it, but I want to say we are at like 21, fiscal year 21, 22, so if we didn't use any of that monies, then it would lapse, but we're okay right now. I'll check on, I check, I'll check on the date, but I want to say it's like four or five years. So if we don't use it within the five years after we've, well, after we've been approved, then we would lose that amount.
And John Dominguez has been, you know, organizing these pickup groups on Hacienda, and we've been doing that with volunteers. And I look at the frequency and I'm thinking, every two weeks, really? I mean, is there anything that prevents us, if we do go through with this and we do hire these, hire the group to do it, is there anything that prevents us from increasing the frequency to, you know, every six weeks or every two months or something like that? Because, I mean, coming out here every two weeks, yeah, that'd be great, but we're going to deplete it real fast and then it's gone. So that's just my thoughts.
Plus, the problem is that we're going to, we're going to eat up virtually all the money we have accrued in one year, which doesn't make any sense, because this is a forever sort of a task. So maybe trying to scope it differently would be better than just, I kind of agree with what Brian says, that it seems to me that, you know, if you could get a comprehensive cleaning quarterly and then rely on volunteers, maybe we could bring it down to around five grand a year or something like that, where we fit within the, the grant monies that we have available. I, I don't, it just, it seems like, yeah, we have one year and we do it, and that's it, and now we don't have any money to do it next year, so it would be better to have it be continuous.
We can go back and work with them to look at scaling it back, what, what would it be to scale it back, remove Harbor, to be about 5,000 a year and move from there. We can bring it back to you.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that, yeah, we limit it to Hacienda, we, I think we make it more sustainable, so that we're just using the $5,000 and then look at, you know, because we just cleaned Hacienda, what, a month ago?
It's coming up again.
I know, but it's, it's a disaster already. I mean, there's so much trash along Hacienda as, as, as we sit here right now, that having something in between might be worthwhile.
Now, and somebody, I won't say who, commented to me about, I know when we pick up Hacienda, I know Rafferty's schedule is that at the same day as the big park pickups, right? So that city staff salaries are covered?
Typically, we do it when we do quarterly cleanup, so obviously, we do have some staff here for quarterly cleanups, so Grace, Angel are typically here, obviously by salaried, so that's not a consideration, but we did try to coordinate with the quarterly cleanup, that way it's...
Could, could we use this money to cover staff costs of supervision of the volunteers? They, they, they're there to protect us, I know. Is, is that a possible use?
We could, something, something for us to look at, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I think we're going to send this back for some additional research and we'll agendize it again at the April meeting. Do we need a motion for that, or no? Okay. Brian, did you?
No, I just agree, it's, I am thoroughly in agreement. It sounds like all the council's on board with the same thoughts.
Yep. All right, item 24, or sorry, item 25, equestrian access trail at the intersection of east and Hacienda.
Yes, this is item from Councilmember Azula. This is for a equestrian access point that will come from the intersection of Hacienda and East Road to provide accesses into the park for horses and equestrian type things and/or people for that. So obviously, we had a resident that volunteered services to go out and do some of the work related to actually constructing this, and we do need a plan for it. Another resident reached out and volunteered to do the plan for us. So attached, we, we got it just before we were done printing the packets. So attached before you is the, the proposal of how we would do the work, after looking at it with the city engineer, the Mr. Dyker, who has volunteered to do the work, and Mr. Durkin, who has volunteered to prepare the plans for us. They all went out, they looked at it, conferred, and this is how they are going to be moving forward with it. For us to move on to the next step, council has to approve the plan and authorize us to move forward.
So in looking at this, there's no retaining wall, it's just re-grading that slope, correct?
Trying to regrade that slope to be able to, to move over and build up as you go up. And so it'll be a little bit of a longer path that we'll go up, so it won't require retaining walls or be too extreme of a grade.
And is there a plan to do some sod replanning, so we don't have erosion on this freshly graded area? I mean, because it looks like we're going to have to, they're going to have to grade quite a bit to get this not to require a retaining wall, so do we need some budget for that, or so that we can have a contractor come in and re-sod, or how, how do we plan on avoiding erosion issues?
It would be that, it would be, we would have to look at sod versus other landscaping that would be appropriate on that steep of a, a slope face. I don't know if sod is the most appropriate to it, but yes, additional, additional funding will be needed for some of the materials related with it in the end, as far as, like I said, preventing erosion on the, the cut slopes portion.
Yeah.
We could plant a bag of poppy seed.
Some avocado trees.
Or we could plant, we could throw down spring flowers.
Yes.
Okay, all right, any questions on this?
I'd just basically like to thank Jim Dyker and David Durkin for their work on this. Perhaps when it's done, we could name it the Dyker-Durkin Trail, but they deserve recognition. In, in any case, they, in my mind, they're stepping forward is in the highest traditions of law, rights, volunteerism. I want to thank them both for their efforts on this, thank you.
Rafferty, when do we think they're going to start?
If council approves, we can start working with Mr. Dyker to figure out schedule and then moving.
So, so let's do this, I, I don't see an approval on this. It's just that we don't say no, right? Because there's no approval item?
It'd be preferable to approve the plan for various...
Reasons.
Design immunity reasons, legal stuff.
The, the plan came in right as we were in like print mode, so there was some time to really update the, the staff report for it.
Move approval.
So can I modify it just a little bit? Move approval with you coming back to us, so between now and April, if you could look at, are there going to be some landscaping needs? And if there's a budget component, can you bring that to us in April?
Definitely.
Okay, so with that modification?
Yeah, move approval with those conditions.
Yeah, a clarification, will they be able to start in March, or will they have to wait until April final approval?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm saying start.
Oh.
I just want to make sure that we don't, that in April, we're ready, we have an agendized item, ready to deal with any unforeseen issues or landscaping issues.
Absolutely, absolutely, there's always unforeseen issues, thank you.
Do we want to start grading before the rainy season's over? She asks, because she doesn't understand.
I, I think, I mean, I think we'll be all right, I mean...
Their, their working is already relatively covered with ground. There are not too much ground disturbance, so we'll, we'll definitely work. Mr. Dyker has done it for years and years and years, and we'll work with him.
All right, so we have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second? Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John Chess. Did you get all that? Okay. All right, so that's the end of the administrative items. Any council member items and/or meeting attendance reports? None? All right. Any public comments for items not on the agenda? None. All right, I'll adjourn the meeting, thank you all.